It is 6:31. We will call the Monday, February 13th, 2023 City Council Meeting to Order. If you could please start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
No additions.
All right, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, same sign, motion carries five zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Got to be someone. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll move to consent. Is there anything on consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion?
Um, I don't know if it needs to be pulled for further discussion, but I have a question and reading through the council minutes from January 23rd. It looks like we missed under the administration, number two. There's no second by council member?
Ah, yes. Go back and add that in. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda with the one correction to the city council minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Councilmember Eli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries five zero. That will take us to our public hearing. We will open. Should I open it right away, Nick, or do you need to say anything first or should I just open them?
You can open right up.
We will open the public hearing on the proposed water treatment facility plan. We do it both in link here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, community members. We're thrilled to have your excitement in the wastewater facility. We know that's why you came out. I do hear your fire department people, so usually they like the water a little bit more than the wastewater, but we won't be picky. We are here today to have the public hearing for the wastewater treatment facility plan that we put together. And so this is a requirement for the MPCA and the funding, so we'll keep it nice and quick for you. The location of the wastewater plant is on the west side of town, where that blue dot is called out. And the facility was originally built in 1999. On the next slide there, yep. And upgrades already happened about 20 years ago. And so looking, this project is going to address that aging infrastructure, as well as some of your future growth and some new limits that are going to be implemented into your wastewater permit. Your equalization pond is helpful for the rain events that you guys get, so we don't have to expand the plant capacity at this time. That mitigates those peak flows that we get. But looking at the biosolids treatment, on the other hand, this facility is at capacity. It was built in your original 1999 package plant. And it is currently posing safety concerns for our staff and with it not originally being built for the biosolids treatment, it also poses operational difficulties. Getting it to flow through and get pumped out as well. So on the different phases of the project here, we looked at a range of doing everything and doing nothing and came up with a couple components that need to be addressed first and four different options to look at for your biosolids treatment. And we are going with option number one. We are recommending that you expand your storage. It is very similar to the current treatment that you have. And on the next slide, you can see all four of them and what they include. But this will provide you sufficient capacity for a year's worth of biosolid storage. And then we can treat it as needed and have a little bit less of the maintenance issues that we're working with right now. And then phase two, this, these are different components that can get addressed over the next 10 to 15 years, depending on how the city continues to grow. And we can address those as they come. And so on the next slide there, we've got the, the recommendation and implementation for the two phases and the approximate timeframes on when we could address those. And that brings us to the opinion of probable cost. The biosolids project with a couple other upgrades is about a $7 to $9 million project, which would pose a rate impact of about $25 to $30 per month. With assuming we get a $2.5 million grant from PSIG. And, but this can be offset by some of that debt that's retiring in the next couple of years. So we've got our improvement schedule here. Over the next couple of years, this would get implemented. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Questions, comment, anyone from the public have any comments that they'd like to make? Any questions from council? Nick, were there any emails that we need to address or put on the record?
Nope.
Hearing none, then I guess we will close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, with that, we'll move to item 13, Adoption of Resolution 2023-11, Receive and Accepting the Wastewater Treatment Facility Plan. Any questions on that? Any comments? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve Resolution 2023-11.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion?
When do we apply for the grant or have we already?
The facility plan goes in right now and that's the starting process. And then they remove and approve it in the summer.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, I will move to the consideration approval of preliminary engineering scope and fee, fees approval or proposal. Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the preliminary engineering scope and fees proposal.
A motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, with that, that will take us to Resolution 2023-12, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So with this, obviously, we have our firefighters, our first responders here. We're here tonight to honor Rod Metzl, and for 51 years of service, there was a community open house a week ago Sunday that was well attended. Obviously Rod's commitment to this community, the fire district, is just above all beyond anyone could imagine. We're just couldn't be more blessed to have him on the department for 51 years, on many roles. He's seen many different things. He's been in three different fire stations, numerous apparatus, numerous members. So with that, is we're looking for a way to kind of honor Rod. And so with that, what the city has decided to do, we are taking the meeting room at the new fire station and we're dedicating that in Rod's name and renaming it so it'll forever be known as the Rod Metzl Training Room from here on in, so. Again, Rod, we appreciate everything you've done. And of course, without leaving his wife Lois out of it, who's obviously been in the background through the 51 years, we appreciate everything she's done too, so thank you Lois. So with that, the room is dedicated to Rod Metzl, Fire Chief, to the city of mayor who served from January 1972 to January 2023. In gratitude of his 51 years of commitment, distinguished service and leadership to the fire department and community, we honor his passion and pride to fill this calling and giving his best to guard his every neighbor and protect their property. So with that, we'll be ordering a plaque, once this gets approved, and we'll hang the plaque up on, on the wall and forever known as the Rod Metzl Training Room, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been a privilege and honor to serve this community for all the people, especially when I think Lois for doing this. I'm so hard to say, talking to her.
You're good.
But she put up with a lot, 51 years, but she does know how important it is to help people when they're stressed. We missed a lot of things through the years, and I know she knows that it was important to me. Also thank my family and my fellow firefighters. My family of firefighters. Or I thank council and the mayor for dedicating that office to me. Thank you, appreciate it very much.
And like I said, with all the accomplishments, far too many to, to list through it all. But he certainly has been a blessing of the community, so thanks Rod. So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-12.
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Would you like to do the picture now? Yeah, me as well. So we invite Rod up and we'd like to get a photo with city council.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
You don't want to be.
I'm good.
Trust me, I'll be in the paper now. Okay Lois, let's hear some of the stories then now. Let's get the truth out here. Yeah. Wonderful. Yeah, absolutely. And good. That's good. Wonderful, well, thank you. Thank you all for coming.
We appreciate it.
So if you'd like to take a moment now, if you'd like to depart from the council meeting, all of us have to be here, but we don't want to make everybody suffer through this. So if you'd like to take off, you certainly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just like that, now we're at our normal capacity.
It's still above normal.
True.
It's usually just done.
Right, with that, we'll move on to, we have a presentation of the Watertown Mayor Public Schools State of the Schools update. You want to introduce, Nick? So this is Darren Schuler. He is the superintendent of the Watertown Mayor School District.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council and City Administrator Johnson for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the district, Watertown Mayor Public Schools this evening. I also should note, we have our school board chair, Hunter Felte, here tonight as well. Hunter is a mayor resident, so thank you for coming as well. Hard to follow that act with Rod in his 51 years, but I'll do my best and we'll be brief. The purpose of tonight is to kind of give you an overview of some of the things that are happening within the school district. And we've been trying to do this over the last couple of years. We missed you last year, but we got back on track with Nick coming on board. I know there was some, some change over there, so I'm glad we can come tonight and just give you a little overview. I do the same presentation with the Watertown Council and Chamber. So this is to be the presentation, pretty much the same presentation they got a few months back. So Nick, I'll just let you click through. As you know, we're all about opportunities and connections, and that is one of the neat things about this district in that we can provide some really great opportunities for kids in a, in a very small district. And you'll see some of the pictures coming up and you can scroll ahead to the next one. Again, of just providing hundreds of opportunities for kids in many different varieties. And that's again, what we pride ourselves in. One of the things, we do have a strategic roadmap, and as you can see on our roadmap, we are expiring and at the end of this school year. With that being said, we've done a lot of work within this school year to start to rebuild our new strategic roadmap that'll take us up to the year 2028. Right now, we've done community listening sessions, we've done staff listening sessions, we've done student listening sessions on just what does that look like for the next five years in Watertown Mayor Public Schools? And it's been a really exciting process. If you scroll the next piece, this is kind of our rough draft of what it's going to look like. We have to put some final touches on it and then we'll roll that out to our communities here in the next few months, going into next school year. But again, just some really big strategic commitments, learner outcomes, financial stewardship, a profile of a graduate, which you'll see on our next slide, partnerships with our communities and our, and our families. All means all, which every child will feel safe and welcome in our, in our school community. The people, again, building the culture around our schools, and then the communication piece, which we're always trying to improve on, is the communication to our stakeholders. The next slide is that profile of a graduate. This also is about five years old, and, and the goal of this, with these six areas that you see in the center, were what we were really trying to, to build out in all of our graduates when they leave Watertown Mayor Public Schools. So creative problem solvers, effective communicators, being resourceful, self motivated learners, personal responsibility and critical thinkers. We're actually in the process of revising this as well, because as we went through the COVID times, the last couple of years, we, we've noticed there's some things that have changed during that time, as you all know, at the council level as well. And so we're going to be addressing those in an updated profile of a graduate, which you'll probably see next year when I come back to share that out. So not major changes, but definitely the social emotional pieces of, of our students need to be addressed, and that'll be addressed in that new plan, so. Thank you. One of their goals this year, in, in across the whole district, is something called multi-tiered systems of support. It's called MTSS. One of the things that we've known after the two years of our pandemic, student loss, learning loss was, was pretty evident and all the way across the board. So one of the things that we've done is we've worked very closely with the University of Minnesota and a group called the CARRY Organization, to really give teachers the professional development that they need to support students who are struggling. And again, our elementary staff, which is pretty unique, I'd probably venture to say we're in the few elementary schools in the state that have embarked in letters training, which is kind of the gold standard right now in terms of reading instruction. And we'll be starting that, we're finishing that this spring and we'll be implementing it next fall. But again, pretty proud of our elementary staff and special education staff for beginning that process of really diving deep into what helps students be able to read, and that's what it's all about. So that's one of our goals. The second one is, again, student and staff mental health supports. One of the neat things this year, high school and middle school staff members were all trained this summer and into this school year with a group out of McLeod County called To Be Continued. And what it is, is truly mental first aid for staff and students. So one example, when we were training our high school staff this, this fall, you know, our, one of the staff members who has young, young ladies as, as his own children in his own home said, you know, we do so much training on, on, on bloodborne pathogens and things that we may never have to worry about, but we don't do enough training on helping kids who are struggling mental, with their mental health. And it was kind of an eye opener for all of us to realize that we too, as staff members, can be that support for staff, and at least for students, and being there for them when they need that support. We also worked with Jane Schute, who was a local professional development person, and really again, on staff, building your brilliance and starting with your home and building up from there, and you gotta be, you gotta be mentally, you know, okay yourself to be effective in the classroom or anywhere. So that was really valuable as well. Going back in time a little bit, 2019 was our, our big bond referendum, was $25 million. One of the things that it did is updated our, our classrooms, our outdoor facilities, helped get some long-term maintenance projects completed and a new entrance into our middle school campus, which you'll see here shortly. One of the cool things about that is we were able to go above and beyond to stretch those dollars. We had some really favorable bids at that time, which allowed us to complete a number of long-term maintenance facility projects that we weren't even expecting to do. How often you get that opportunity? Mike's laughing and saying, no, you don't. And, and that was so rare. I think we were able to touch about $4 million extra dollars that we wouldn't have been able to do some of these projects, and I'll show you that next. So these were some of the areas that we were able to accomplish that were not initially sold to taxpayers, because again, we didn't think we would have the budget to do that, given the boat, the scope of the bond. We were able to remodel our district office and middle school offices, our middle school and high school locker rooms. High school locker rooms, for example, were, were 1974 vintage. Some of you may have been in those at one point in time. Completely got remodeled, and those are now finishing up. Our community learning center playground was remodeled. We were able to take our scope of our furniture. We, we had basically had 55% of our furniture across the district was supposed to be replaced. We were, we were able to replace what, 95% of all student furniture and staff furniture with that remodel. We have new induction, industrial tech equipment. We've been told that some of our industrial tech equipment is better than some small community colleges, which is really exciting. A fire system upgrade across our high school and middle school. We put in a new gymnastics wall and a new high school gym floor. So again, just really excited about the scope of what we were able to do there.
On, on the projects that were planned for.
Yeah.
Are they all completed?
Everything's completed. There's one left, was a late add, was our greenhouse. Our greenhouse will, was kind of an icon, this picture won't show it. This is the new road that was put in last fall, and this was a last fall picture. We came in behind our middle school. One of the things that was a part of the original bond referendum was, the taxpayer said, we gotta fix that front entrance. It, it, there's too much traffic coming in and out, especially in the morning and the afternoon. So now we've alleviated that by adding this road behind the middle school. We cut through the woods. Now they're entering off of Quarry Avenue. We worked with Watertown Township on a, on an agreement to get that paved, Quarry Avenue. Now it's paved up on the top. So you enter here, you exit here, you're middle school parent. It's been a really nice, nice piece of the traffic flow. We've got some really good feedback off of that.
I have to agree with that.
Thank you.
I use it every day, and it's wonderful. And it's super pretty, driving back there in the fall when all the leaves were changing. Yeah, it is very easy to get in and out now and not hoping you can get out and merging with other cars from the high school and.
It's a much safer process and we'd be, we're really very satisfied with that. So on this side, there's a little drainage facility over here, retention pond. But up on top, where our, our shop areas, our FFA and our, our CTE lab is where the greenhouse is going to be. So the greenhouse will be literally out the door from the, the FFA department, which is going to run that, and they'll be working on plant sales and other horticultural type curriculum, which is really exciting as well. So that's essentially the last project from the bond standpoint that we'll be working on to finish, and that will start this summer hopefully. Again, the operating side of the referendum, we were asking to raise that authorization up to $492 per pupil. When we say operating, you know, buildings mean bonds, or bonds mean building. Operating means just the operation of the district, and so that's helped us be able to continue to provide some really great extracurricular and elective offerings at the middle school and high school, keep our current class sizes, again, really update our curriculum, which is, is been, was vital. And then again, just added teacher training and support. So that money has been really nice to continue that, that journey. One of the things too, I think that some folks may not understand is, you know, where do districts typically, public schools, get their money from? Well, literally 80% of our district's funding comes from the state of Minnesota. So right now, at the, at the legislature, there's been a lot of bantering of what that looks like. We keep a close eye on that conversation because it really does impact what we can do as a school district. Because that 80% really is, is, we call it butts in seats. And, and so when our enrollment starts to dip, you know, that, that obviously impacts us greatly. And I'll show you an enrollment slide in just a, just a minute or two here. But again, operating levies cover the expenses of running the schools, like we talked about, teacher salaries, utility supplies, et cetera. One of the neat things on that last paragraph is, is COVID did provide us with some really neat funding opportunities to, to add some, some staff. You know, the short, the hard part about that is it's a two-year fix, and then that money goes away, and now you're looking to replace it after staff says, we love those positions, we can't let those go. So that's where we're at now, is trying to find ways to, you know, after the pandemic and some of the, the dollars that were given to us by the state and the feds, now it's coming back and, you know, trying to get those positions reallocated into our budgets. As you can see, these are some of our enrollment trends. I think what you can see of probably the highlight was, you know, back in 17, or over 15, 72 there. Again, that's K through 12. We saw certainly a dip right around that, that COVID period here. And I think when people look back, you know, there are things that have happened. There's certainly some homeschool families that decided to stay homeschool, and they didn't come back. Certainly some left to private schools. And obviously, the demographics are changing, and, and we've certainly heard that in districts in our area, that the demographics, families just aren't having as many kids, and, and houses that are being built aren't bringing kids like they maybe have in the past. So that's a, that's an area that we're, we're looking closely for at as well. And in this year, we obviously did jump back up, so we're starting to see that rebound. We hope that, that continues moving forward.
Do you know about what a, what percentage, percentage that is of eligible students who would be, who.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, I think I can answer that, Mayor. One of the things that we do each year is we track our census data for birth up to five. So we're getting all that birth data from the county. So for example, last year, we had 175 eligible kindergartners that we had in our census, so 175 students. We had 103 come to our kindergarten. So somewhere in between, there are 72 or so students went elsewhere, whether that be homeschool, private school, open enrolled elsewhere. So, yeah, and, and it's, it's well known that we're trying to stop the rush here in mayor of, of students leaving us and going to other places. So when we talk about those butts in seats, you know, we constantly have that con- So when we talk about those butts in seats, you know, we constantly have that conversation of how do we keep folks who are in our district in our district and not leaving to go to other districts on our borders? Now again, we do get students coming into us from other districts as well, and sometime maybe I'll share that information with you too, because it's pretty interesting. These are some other areas. I think parents, you know, obviously in this day and age, we talk a lot about school security. One of the things that through the bond referendum, we were able to upgrade our middle school entrance. This area here does have a scan-in system, so you bring your license, you scan in, and then the secretary on the inside can see you. This is all glass behind this, so they can get a good visual. And then there's an ability to speak to the secretary inside, and then we buzzed you in rather than just walk right into the office, which it was before. These second set of doors all close at 8:10, so you can't gain entrance that way. You can only gain entrance into this vestibule and then have to scan your license and get buzzed in from the outside. So we've really upgraded that. The elementary building will be getting the same technology here in the next month or two, and we're excited about that too, to keep our building safe. Again, just some pictures of Royals, some of them in our new stadium, which has been a great addition. You know, these turf fields, you see the price tag, but then you start seeing how much they're used, and it's unbelievable. Last spring, we didn't have a softball field because of some drainage issues. Our softball team practiced on our turf football field, and so did our baseball team for a greater part of the spring until they could get on their spaces. So it really has been a huge piece for our athletic program. And again, just in the fall, you know, in the fall, that field was pretty much sacred. You know, football, soccer could use it, and that's it, varsity teams only. Now we have youth teams playing on it. We have, you know, Saturday terms, it's just widely used, so it's been a great investment. Again, we've really worked on our branding over the last two or three years. We always kind of joked, I think the high school especially, you never knew what it was. If you're driving on Highway 25, now we've got some really nice branding that really shows who we are and what we're all about. So we're proud of that. Again, this is our high school atrium. Again, just really the branding piece and really upgrading that look. Lastly, just a couple of quick pieces. We're, I'm trying something this year to get out a little bit more on the community. We had, we've had five of these copies and conversations with the superintendent. Nikki survived one, she didn't get too bored, I don't think. We actually had one here at the community hall here, and we had to interrupt the Uker players, but they were good with it. Harvey Zierman and that crew, they were good, let us join in. And then we have one more coming up, and we'd like to use the fire. I don't know if you've confirmed that yet. Sounds like it might be the Rod Matzfeldt Room that we're going to try to borrow, but we are having one coming up. That'll be the March 21st here in Meyer. So we've done two in Meyer, we'll do three in Watertown. They've been at the coffee shop, R&B's in Watertown. And the last one, the 19th, will be actually at the high school. And then the other thing we'd like to offer is up any tours. So if you ever want a tour of the new facilities, we would love to give you a tour, walk you around, ask any questions. I think you'll be real impressed with the way things have turned out. So please feel free to reach out to me, or I know Nick is on my list, he wants to come over as well, so we'll make that happen. If council wants to join, the mayor, we'd love to have you. Last but not least, social media, feel free to find us on any of those locations. We appreciate that as well, and it's a great way to find out what's happening within our schools, so. With that, I think I am done. Are there any questions that I can answer tonight? Or Chair Felk, for that matter?
Thank you, I appreciate you coming in. And just one note on there, I think the mental health initiatives that you guys are taking on, I think is wonderful.
Yeah, appreciate that. Yep, it is a huge need right now in all areas, from kindergarten all the way up to our senior high students, so it's big. Appreciate for mentioning that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Carver County Sheriff's Office, change of policing coverage. Nick, is that something you want to start with, or should we just go right to Commander Willeen?
Just introduce Commander Mike Willeen with the Carver County Sheriff's Department. He's here to talk to us about the change that's taken place to our policing coverage.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you, Nick. So I'm sure probably many of you are continuing to see things that happen locally and nationally within law enforcement, and that does not make us immune from staffing challenges as we go forward, as we look to fill vacancies that either, you know, we've seen attrition through deputies either leaving for other organizations, or, you know, at the end of last year, we had one of our senior sergeants decided he was going to fulfill his dream, and he took the chief of police job up in Walker. We had another retirement at the end of the year. And so we continue to look to hire and train, but we had a need that we needed to adjust some hours for coverage with Deputy Hendricks, where he is on the, had been on kind of a power shift, covering some PM hours, and we had a need in order to create some scheduling flexibility as well as coverage, to move that to what is our Team One day shift right now on the interim and for a temporary basis as we continue to go forward, which covers, that's our Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday rotation, and then Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and moving him to 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM coverage. So you'll see probably more presence, dedicated stuff through the weekends. Does not mean that your calls are going to go unanswered, similarly to how things happen right now. You don't have 24/7 coverage, but your calls are still being answered when Brad takes time off or utilizes FMLA and different things like that. So we had a need within the office, like I say, to create some scheduling flexibility. We've got a lot of young deputies too, that are starting young families, so we're seeing more FMLA taken, or again, with full-time employees, people use vacation, they get sick, and different things like that. So we had a need to increase our scheduling flexibility that way as we look to continue to, you know, to hire and train. And it's, there's challenges right now with it. You know, when I was looking for law enforcement work, 18, 20 years ago, there was a couple hundred applicants for one or two jobs. You know, our last couple hiring process, we've seen anywhere between 12 and, you know, 20-some applications for multiple positions. And so it's, you know, I'd like to say that, you know, we are fortunate in Carver County that we've got strong community support from communities like you, but we don't have a lot of crime here either. We're a safe county, safe communities, and I'd like to say that that's in part due to our partners as well and in our contract policing models and things that we have, as we continue to be forward-looking and forward-thinking about how we can best, you know, serve our citizenry from a law enforcement perspective and going forward. So we have a SEC, our Sheriff's Contract Committee meeting coming up this week, which Mr. Johnson will be at as we look to have further discussion going forward on what we look at for staffing models, as well as discussion on potential regionalized partnerships and collaborations that way to really maximize resources out there in order to cover the calls for service and effective policing to continue to keep our communities safe, which I'm saying they are safe, and we don't have a lot of violent crime, which you can see from the monthly activity reports.
Any questions for Commander Willeen? And we're still thinking this transition period's three, four, five months is kind of...
So a conversation with Nick, and we're, you know, looking at, when I first approached it with Nick, he said there'd been some discussion, I know past councils, there had been some drive to get evening PM coverage. It sounds like that there's some additional discovered, additional discussion, I should say, on transitioning back to maybe some, what had been previously daytime coverage as well. So it seemed at least an opportunity for us right now to get some of that where it was, what we needed for scheduling flexibility as we continue some of those discussions and where council was at. But I'd like to say that, you know, in the interim, we carry what we need through the Team One coverage with Deputy Hendricks scheduled through second quarter, and we'll continue to have discussion and continue to move forward with where we're at with staffing and what have you. So we've got interviews again tomorrow, had interviews last week, and we've got an open until filled process right now to continue to identify those candidates that we think are a good fit for the policing in Carver County, because it does take a good fit within some of our communities and remain competitive with the metro. Like I was talking with Mr. Dodge, I mean, Mayor Dodge, I'm sorry. You know, there's a lot of cops that live in Meyer, and they, you know, work in communities further east within the major metro area, things like that, so we need to remain competitive with that as well.
Right. Any other questions?
Oh, one other. I assume New Germany's been informed of this.
Yes, yeah.
On our response, you've taken...
No, no, I've communicated with Twila in relation to that aspect, how we were adjusting that response. And again, you know, there will still be deputies to respond to calls for service. People still call 911, all still going to get responded, so wonderful.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, thank you. All right, consider a panel of updated job descriptions for city clerk, public works two, public works lead, and accounting clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So as Councilors know, we've budgeted for additional staff in public works and in the office for 2023 going forward, and we're coming to the point in this process where we're now ready to bring it up to council with all the edits and changes that have been made, to look for approvals, to open for hiring. So when we look at, I'll just talk in scope here. So right now in the city office, we have a city administrator and a city clerk. And what we're looking at doing is adding an accounting clerk position, and that person would handle the finance duties within the city. So accounts payable, accounts receivable, general finance duties, payroll, things of that nature. Now, both of the positions of the city clerk and the accounting clerk will both function as backups to each other in times of need, and also serve as internal checks and control, so we have multiple sets of eyes on things, not only to ensure things are done well, but to make sure things get corrected if they get caught from one or the other.
One or the other.
We're all human, we make mistakes, and multiple eyes looking on things make sure we minimize errors and things. So the structure we're kind of setting up now looks to the future a bit, because when we have the city clerk position, we have the accounting clerk position, and this isn't for 10, 15 years, but really what we're starting here as the city grows, and cities that grow to 4,000 or 5,000, then they start to have more of a finance department, and they more have a city clerk with a deputy clerk underneath them. And so we're starting the buds of that structure, won't be used for quite some time, but I didn't want to structure something that we get down the line, now we have to change the whole structure around and go at it again. Built for growth, built for what we're going to need in the future, but staff for what we need today. So with that, we split out the duties from the city clerk. City clerk handles all the city clerking duties, elections, administration, records retention, records in general, licensing and permitting for a number of things, utilities, a whole slate of things that the city clerk then handles. And then again, they'll be cross-trained with each other, so they'll serve as backups in time of need. So we split those two out, and then when it came to the public works two and public works lead position, there were only very minor edits in those. The other two, we had to rewrite from scratch, just because we were separating out so many duties from that. But for the public works lead position, prior, and really what we're doing with this is we're updating the job description to reflect what Kyle does today, because the job description hasn't been caught up with what he's doing. So the former one, he didn't supervise anybody, and actually Brian reports directly to me under the job descriptions. That's how it actually works. Brian reports up to Kyle, and then Kyle's the one who leads the departments. So added in that public works worker one and two under the positions, public works lead supervises, and changed some of this information, deleted out, and just added water, wastewater back up in here, and that was the major changes to the public works lead.
So further down, just ending that sentence where you delete, struck out, stands with an and?
We'd probably get rid of an, too.
Do we not, is he not responsible for parks?
So those are just, those are general fund activities. So he's got streets, he's got parks, he's got all of those in there, yeah.
So I'm wondering if we just leave and parks?
Because he's responsible for snow plowing, streets, parks, all of that.
Yeah, maybe you just, I think you just, it goes and parks, period, and then you striked out and may include water and wastewater. I think the right and the strike just went a little too far.
Sure.
To the left.
Sure.
Perfect.
And then for the public works worker two position, that went from reporting directly to the city administrator to the public works lead, and then edited the information where it said under supervision of the public works lead in that. And that was the only change to the public works two classification. So that is the update on the realignment of positions.
Questions on any of the job descriptions? I'll look for a motion to approve the updated job description for city clerk, public works two, public works lead, and accounting clerk.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Call for help for the second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Here in the House, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, consider approval of pay range for accounting clerk position.
So the Personnel Committee and I, we reviewed 10 different cities with comparable accounting clerk equivalent positions. We had a handful on there that were on the League of Minnesota Cities website already that were hiring for an accounting clerk position, and then we had six others in the area that we looked at as well. And in that range, we came up with a proposed pay range of $25 per hour to $32.90 per hour. So we'd be looking for, the recommendation came up, would to be approve this as the starting wage for the accounting clerk position.
I'll look for a motion to approve the starting wage for the accounting clerk, $25 per hour to $32.90 per hour.
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Approval of the MOU with the Local 49 Union.
So because the employees are represented by union, we had to make sure we got all the changes out in front of the union, and that included the job description changes along with the proposed pay range and the MOU that was drafted by the union. My understanding is this has been approved on the union side. This just integrates that into the existing union contract. I've reviewed this language, everything looks in good order, all the figures look accurate.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding what the Local 49 Union.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? And this did go through Personnel Committee, so we have reviewed it. Did Tim get his eyes on this, other than just being in his packet? Okay.
Didn't need his help on it.
Perfect. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Consider approval to authorize the opening of the accounting clerk and public works two position for hiring.
So now that we've gone through all that and got all that ironed out, now we get to authorize the opening of the positions. I've drafted up the advertisements, and they'll be ready to go in the paper by the end of the week, so I'll get those sent off tomorrow. Submission date for the paper is Tuesday, so I'll get those off to them. We'll post it on the League of Minnesota Cities website, and that's really the only place we need to go as far as exterior advertisements for positions with cities. The league site is the go-to place for any sort of city posting in the state of Minnesota. So applications will be due on Friday, March 10th. I'll go through those applications, I'll score them to determine qualifies for interviews. We'll come up with the interview list. When it comes to the accounting clerk position, myself and the public works committee will go through the interview process.
I need personnel.
Which one did I say?
He said public works.
Public works, sorry. Personnel Committee, Personnel Committee and I will... Public works, sorry. Personnel Committee, Personnel Committee and I will do the interviews for the accounting clerk. And then for the public works two position, it'll be the Personnel Committee, Kyle and I on that interview panel. And once we've gone through the process and we have our candidate that we would like to recommend for hiring, we will bring that back to city council for formal recommendation and then final approvals for hiring.
All right. I'll look for a motion to approve an operation to open and hire for accounting clerk and public works worker two.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Would you be able to put together kind of a timeline of, of when we think things will start happening?
Yep.
And I'm kind of looking where, where, where we think it's going to come to council ultimately is what I'm looking for.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, say, excuse me, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Now we'll move to consider approval to authorize the purchase of a Polaris 800 Ranger from the Minnesota DNR for the fire department.
Mayor Council, so Andy Metzl brought forth a recommendation to see about purchasing a Polaris 800 Ranger. This was from the DNR in the amount of $4,500. The unit has 1,824 miles on it, but it's been inspected and a lot of the wear and tear items have been repaired or replaced, as you saw in the packet with listing in there. If, if the equipment was purchased, we would look to be putting on warning lights, scene lighting and sirens. And Andy got a quote for that in the amount of $6,180.85. And then it would be look, he would be looking at getting a grant to put a slip-in unit with a small pump and water tank. Now, fire department is looking at this use, or this piece of equipment for a handful of uses. Would it be good for medical calls and rescues occurring on off-road or on the trail system in town? Could assist in transport of firefighters and equipment on rural fire scenes, be useful in grass fires where off-road control is needed. And then just helping to cover medical assistance at neighboring cities when, cities when they have parades when requested. We believe we are the only city in Carver County which does not have a UTV at this time. That being said, we are one of the only ones that have a Humvee and a Gamma Goat grass rig. Those pieces of equipment are quite old and will need to be replaced eventually. UTV is what many of the departments have been using for these types of responses listed above. We think this would be an inexpensive way to get into a UTV type of use to really gain some experience on what it'll be used for. My understanding is the DNR has changed up their rules, as Andy informed me about how equipment can be used and then sold if it doesn't work out. It used to be that you had to keep that unit indefinitely or give it back to the DNR. Correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but they changed those to the, now that they just sign it over to you hands-free so that if later down the road you want to sell it, you can. But we're hoping that this pans out and then we can get a lot of great use out of this. For funding of this, we're looking to have it come out of Fund 212, which is the Fire Department Donations Fund. These are current donations which have been made to the city for purchasing equipment as they arise. And the current balance is $21,586.98. So we do not, this would not have an impact on the 2023 budget. Andy, anything else you'd like to add to that?
Well, that covers everything I got. If that's a big question.
And at this point, Andy, you're not looking at a trailer for it?
Right now, we're not looking for a trailer. I think plans are, our fire district is fairly small. And the time, looking at the kind of the timeline it takes to hook up a trailer, trailer it there, unhook it, unload it and stuff like that, in most cases, we could drive it there a lot faster. It would have, it would be in, in that quote for some of that lighting, it would have, you know, turn signals, all that type of stuff. So it is, you know, highway capable.
And what do you think the life expectancy of this will be?
Hard to say. I mean, life expectancy, it is, what is it, 10 years old or so? But it, I would think, you know, we could get another, you know, five to 10 years out of her, something like that for what we're going to use it for. You know, looking at the price of what it costs, I felt it's a very inexpensive way to get into it. I know some of the neighboring cities that have just purchased some have spent, you know, 60 some thousand on their rigs. So this is a relatively inexpensive way for us to get into it, sort of utilizing it, seeing how much it does kind of help and you, you know, that we do use it and stuff like that. If it is something that seems to be used a lot and, you know, then at some, you know, point we can look, you know, to, to update it. But I felt this was a very inexpensive way to get into that.
So will we be, will you be looking to sell the Humvee and the?
As of right now, no. The Humvee, we just, as you remember, recall, in, in fall, we'd, we'd approved it, get some updates put on that. So we, we look at that to be around yet for a while. The Gamma Goat that we have, you know, although, you know, being, you know, fairly old, we do have, we actually do have a, a second one, a parts vehicle for say, that we have is out at RNV. One time we had needed some parts, the DNR said, here, tag it. So we, we've got another one. It's kind of a parts thing. So the reason we kind of hang on to those is for that type of application, there's nothing that kind of beats those. Whenever we go to grass fires and stuff, the equipment that we, we are utilizing by far kind of does a better job in this. But to replace, you know, you can't replace that type of stuff now, or the cost to replace something to that caliber would be quite large. And these are the types of machines that most of the county has, has gone to for those purposes. So, and your answer is right now, not looking to. And that piece of equipment, we could not sell. That was through the DNR. And when we purchased those, if we no longer want them, they go back to the DNR. So it would have no, no gain to us to get rid of them. You know, as long as it isn't costing us money and repairs and stuff, we're going to keep on using it.
Any other questions for Chief Metzl?
Yeah, those extra items that you were adding on to that, was there anywhere in there for like decals or anything like that?
Yes, correct.
You put on there?
Yep. So what that quote he put together for me would include some decals to put on there to identify it. It would include some emergency lighting on it, some light, kind of a light bar for extra, you know, to be able to see better. Instead of just the headlights, it'd be something that'd be mounted up on top of the cab. So in, when you're out, you know, in night and rural, you know, out in the rural, we'd have very good vision. And then it did have a, a warning siren on that. Now, that was a, a bid that he kind of just quick put together. Once we get the machine, the, or once we, if we, if we would get the machine, our plans would be to kind of look at it a little bit different and search out, you know, some maybe a little less, you know, possibilities of doing the same thing. But it was a, a budget number that I kind of had gotten that, you know, I know I can get it done for this amount, but our plans are to, to look areas to be able to do that a little less expensive.
Any other questions? All right. I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of the Polaris 800 Ranger from the Minnesota DNR for $4,500.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? And Chief Metzl, thank you. I appreciate you keeping an eye out on these things. I think it's a great buy. I think this is the right thing to do. It's obviously a great price for, I was looking at buying a UTV and kind of had our guru fire first responder who's looked at it too. And obviously has said it's certainly a great purchase. So.
We did, this is like the third one that the, the DNR has kind of brought to our attention. It was available. The first couple were not as, not, not as nice a piece of equipment and not as good a deal. But as this one came on, said we had Nate McNeely, who's on our department, that is a, a dealer for these, kind of looked at it and said that it was well worth that. And.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Okay, then we will go to the approval of the quote to outfit the Polaris 800 Ranger. We need, has everyone looked at that? Should we just make this, Andy, if you're maybe looking at maybe readjusting things, should we just make it a not to exceed 61, 6,100?
That would be my suggestion. You know, do it to.
Flexibility to do.
Exactly. To, to do it is to not to exceed this.
Yep.
I said, we, one with, once we get the machine, we're going to kind of look at it and look at, you know, other options and stuff to be able to do the same type of stuff for hopefully less. But at least I know that this would be my kind of top range on it.
A motion to approve.
Should we just do like 6,200? So it's just an even number instead of like 6,180.85?
Yeah, we'll look for a motion then to approve the quote not to exceed $6,200 to outfit the Polaris 800 Ranger.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is this ready to go? Are they, can you take delivery on it right away?
Yep. He had been asking. I said, I told him I would have an answer for him after tonight. So plans are, I will let him know tomorrow and then he'll just have to arrange, they'll deliver it down to us. So just arrange for that. All right?
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. A lot of quotes for the replacement of city hall lighting.
Thank you, Mayor. Kyle obtained two quotes for the city hall lighting retrofit LED replacement. And the two quotes for, from AME Electric from here in mayor. And then the other was Extreme Electrical Services from Norwood Young America. And a little extra background on this, we're looking at replacing all of the lighting in the city hall and the community center. So that includes the city offices, council room, the main hallway out front here, bathrooms, the community center gym, including the stage area as well as the community center kitchen. And this came forward from when we did our energy audit a little while ago. And the savings we're looking at having at that with the, just the lighting itself in the, the non-gym areas, we're looking at about 22, $2,300 per year in energy savings on that with a rebate of a little over $2,700. For the trofer style lighting, if we just do the type B ballast removal with the tubes in the existing fixtures, you're still saving about the same electricity, but then you're looking at a rebate of a little over $1,000 on that, close to 1,100. And then you, you have your simple payback schedules with those of 5.11, 5.3 years with the trofer lighting versus just under two years with the type B bulb with the ballast removal. And then the high bay lights, we're looking at saving about 470 bucks a year in electricity and with about $1,800 in rebate on that. Kyle and I have reviewed both options. And then, so we're recommending we're going with the architectural trofer LED, the Columbia style. That's the concave one with the light in the middle on that versus a flat panel. It is the most expensive of that. And generally speaking, I don't go with the most expensive. But it does eliminate the ballast from the old fixtures entirely, which is the, the failure point going forward. So you won't have to mess around with that ever again. It saves the most energy out of all of them, but it also adds a really nice aesthetic touch that I think is going to be much preferred over the flat panel design. A lot of the new buildings that are built tend to have that trofer style lighting go into them. So looking to upgrade on that front. So we look at the two quotes from AME Electric and Extreme AME came at, and at the lowest in both fronts for the retrofit, theirs was 13,484 versus 20,585. Then on the, the flat or the architectural design, it was 22,964 versus 20, 22,964 versus 26,730. If you combine in the cost of the retrofit and the, or the architect, architectural with the rebate, then you have the final cost at, as are shown there. Look to have city council make a decision on what to go with.
Just so I'm clear, we'd be looking at the 22, if, if we went with the recommendation with the Columbia trofer LEDs, we're looking at AME for 22,964.
Right.
And the number down below also?
No.
Oh, so this is the base, this is the base amount?
Okay.
This is the rebate we would get?
Yep.
And then, I'm sorry, wrong one. This is the rebate we would get, which would make that 18 for 14, the total cost after the rebate.
Okay.
For that.
Any questions?
I, I like the recommendation. I think spending a little bit more, we get a little bit of a bigger rebate. So the cost difference between the two aren't, isn't as great. I think aesthetically, I think it will look real nice in here, especially since we did budget for some of these improvements. And I think that's, it's slightly lower than what we even were anticipating.
Well, not to mention, it's usually about 300 bucks a ballast. They have electrician come in and replace just one. So. Oh, I figured that.
And the gym lighting will all be on one switch.
Which will be really nice instead of like 10.
Breakers.
And then does it take about 15 minutes to warm up? Or is it, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
You're like Parker's Walden.
I'll look for a motion to approve the quote from AME Electric to replace the lighting with the trofer LED Columbia style for a quote of 22,964.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Is that the last item?
Last item.
I just, I only had one page here.
The page is empty.
All right.
Oh, I didn't even copy the next one.
Sorry, we'll go, any council updates? Councilmember Wagner, do you have anything to update us on?
No.
Councilmember Ely, anything to update us on?
Not at this moment.
Councilmember Health?
We just had personnel meeting on the 26th and we discussed and approved all the things that we talked about tonight.
Right. And I had a public works meeting and same thing, we're going to be discussing the sidewalks here at the work session. At the public works meeting we had, we also discussed the parking over by Zion that was brought up by a resident and some concerns over there. So we took a look at it. We don't feel right now there's a, a real, we don't think there's a safety concern and we think first responders can get where they need to be. We don't see a concern right now. We'll continue to monitor it. Well, maybe it'll take another look at it in the spring when all the snow's gone and things clear up with some. But we don't see it as a concern right now, as it's, hasn't been in 100 years.
So did we consider ever putting, right, like the sheriff thing there and counting how many cars come through, right? They kind of talked about the parade of cars. Have we thought about?
We could probably do something. I mean, because our sign, would our sign count car, that'd count cars, right? Our speed signs. So we can look at doing something.
And again, I don't know that, I know we talked about safety concerns and things like that. I don't remember speed being a thing, but it may not be a bad, right? Like, I think it shows we're trying.
Especially the way they're parked. Speed won't, isn't a concern. Our first concern was making sure first responder, you know, emergency vehicles. And we think there's enough ways coming in and out through that whole area there up Canary and different ways that we don't see it as being a concern right now. But we can, we can take a look at that in the spring, too. We'll talk about it in the spring in our, at one of the public works meetings.
Okay.
And what else did I have? We're continuing to look at. We're continuing to look at, as we've been instructed from council, administering myself and continuing to look at a spot for Ridgeview and Sheriff's where we can start putting, putting them. We have a couple ideas where you just got to meet with Ridgeview now and then talk a little bit more with Brad Hendricks and then we'll bring something to council. So with that, I have nothing more. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned. All right, with that, we will jump right into the workshop. Call them, call the workshop order.
Thank you, Mayor. So bringing back some more research that we're dug up and then look some, have a discussion with council on what we found regarding the asphalt sidewalk replacement in Hidden Creek and Coldwater Crossing. Dave Martini put together a letter of costs involved with that. We have approximately ninety-six hundred square, linear feet of asphalt sidewalks contained within there. And so what he put together was replacing, so that top line there, that's replacing all ninety-six hundred at once. The second line was just looking at, well, what if you just did what's adjacent to our twenty-twenty-three maintenance, street maintenance that we're looking at doing, the mill and overlay and the seal coat. And then the ADA trailer, you don't have to worry too much about, that's, I'm looking at including that as part of the grant I'm writing to the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant for the splash pad. They like to see ADA improvements of interpark facilities and specifically with Old School House Park, so that was included there on the whole thing for that.
Just to be clear, Dave, if you could confirm the, replace existing pedestrian ramps, those numbers are flip-flopped, I assume? The twenty-two five should be down below and the eighty-two five up above?
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
So I know some of the discussions we were having revolved around, do you go to concrete? Do you go to, back to Batumis or asphalt? And then what are the maintenance costs that are surrounded with that? And then just general discussions. Then we also got into discussions about, in our special assessment policy, when you replace sidewalk, it calls for fifty percent to be paid by the city and then fifty percent to be paid by the abutting property owner. So as we started peeling this onion back, we found some things that maybe we wanted to have council discuss, what would be palatable, what wouldn't be palatable, and then just discuss options on all of that. So with concrete, you get a longer lifespan of approximately fifty years, lower maintenance costs over time since you can replace panels without noticeable patches. It does have a higher initial cost, but the offset on that is that you do less maintenance versus asphalt, whereas asphalt has a lower initial cost, but you do more maintenance to it over time. So when we put those together, this was the, in your packet, he had the map of the sidewalk system as we have it, along with the other trails that we've got around town. And this was for Old School House Park. Now, that's being funky good. So when we put together those costs, I would have to flip the pet ramps, but it's not going to affect the math too much. So you had the full replacement costs versus the adjacent. I went with full replacement on the annual cost, just to give an idea, included some figures for asphalt maintenance, so this is just seal coating. And you do seal coating about every seven years to extend the life of the pavement. So in the ideal situation, you might get up to thirty years worth of asphalt life and that's the cost. So when you see that maintenance number there on the annual cost, it's forty-eight thousand, that's three seal coats with. Now, this doesn't include figures for crack sealing and patching because there's just, there's no way to estimate what that's going to be.
Well, we kind of would have an idea because what our asphalt ones are probably, what, twenty years old now? And we've had to put a lot of money, not a lot, but we're starting to have to put in a lot more because we've got lots of weeds and cracks and dips.
More though.
Correct. So we're at, we're nearing the end of, of its life and we're at twenty.
And, and just one thing to keep in mind with those existing blacktop trails too is they were built with the original development and they saw a lot of wear and tear in those early years when the homes were being constructed.
Oh.
So just something to keep in mind when you look at replacing those, we would hope that you get a little better life than the first time around just because they're not going to.
They're not driving over.
Years with all the construction activity.
So bringing that down in the annual cost at the bottom, when you put, panned it out a cost per year, and this will fluctuate depending on what asphalt and concrete prices are whenever you do a project, but you can see it's up, the old rule of thumb I was always told is in the long-term asphalt and concrete are going to cost you about the same. It's, do you want to pay for it upfront or do you want to pay for it maintenance over time? So it was nice to go through the exercise once again because it shows cost per year is about in the same ballpark of, of each other. And then we get down, this was a page taken out of our special assessment policy here on sidewalks and trails. There you can see with the reconstruction of sidewalks, it's assessed fifty percent to abutting property owners and fifty percent city funded. There was questions about what does trail means because you have Batumis walkways or bike trails that are not assessed, but in our discussions at the public works committee level, we felt this would be, these are sidewalks, they're not necessarily trails. My understanding is, the history is, when the developer developed this, it was originally supposed to be co, or a concrete, but then to lower the cost of doing the project, it was suggested to do asphalt instead to save some money that way. That's.
So are you saying, like, even the path going through Old School Horse and Westridge, that would turn to cement?
No, yeah, the.
So that is still considered a trail?
We kind of define sidewalks.
Because it would look weird to be cement.
In front of somebody's house, the only kind of a front yard situation. Anything that goes off of, isn't adjacent to the street, kind of in the, through the parks, you can see in Hidden Creek, there's a couple connections between cul-de-sacs and, and the, the rest of the trail system. That's what we would kind of consider your trail system.
Okay.
Nick and I have talked about having Dave help us update this map to have our trails system and our sidewalks system, kind of separate them out, to kind of make it more, this is trail, this is sidewalk, and then have you guys review it.
And you only looked at, because some of our sidewalks are already cement on some of the new areas, so that.
So the Hidden Creek sixth and seventh, that's all concrete sidewalk in those additions. And then Coldwater seventh is concrete sidewalks, one side of the road, five foot concrete. And then the eighth addition that's just been built, I don't believe the sidewalks are in yet, but that will get five foot sidewalks on the north part of the, or north side of the road through that loop.
Leave the middle sections of trail tar yet?
Say that again?
We're going to leave the little sections of trail tar yet?
They would never be cement.
Like Old School House.
Right.
Westridge.
Those would all, always be.
All state are.
Well, I don't know. Kind of makes sense for concreting everything else, it's going to look kind of stupid, isn't it?
Typically, again, you know.
You're kind of divided.
The sidewalk you usually see is, is concrete. Again, in my mind, that's kind of that front yard situation. Most often in parks, some of those connections, you see blacktop, that, that's a pretty standard way to do it.
Well, because Westridge, you're not coming from really any sidewalks.
Right.
On that road.
Westridge.
Old School House, again, you wouldn't really be coming from any sidewalks, you'd be going onto a sidewalk. And both sides, and then Metal Park would be going on, but through the park, I would think.
Yeah, for sure, in the park, that would be blacktop. There is a couple other sections of trail, like between the cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
There that we take, we maintain, those potentially might be concrete, just to help it blend a little bit better. But, I mean, I think it would still work it up even if they.
Yeah, and, and the one thing just to consider is you probably end up with a different width, with the things that you're maintaining versus what you're expecting the resident to maintain. Resident, you know, the five foot sidewalk is pretty standard and it works well for either shoveling or your snow blower. You get through the trails when you kind of picture the equipment that you're using to clear your trails. You almost need a little bit of an extra width on that just to accommodate the maintenance of it.
Is there any concern with, like, I know a lot of driveways, like in Hidden Creek are asphalt and the concrete running that up to it, potentially wearing that more because of their driveways? Is there any concern of that maybe or any valid, validation, anything like that?
It, it's, it's an issue from a standpoint, you've got to match all that stuff. So when we're building it new, it works out pretty well because we can get the cross slope kind of maintained through the, the driveway. The nice thing about doing it with the concrete, it kind of establishes that bench that doesn't change. If you see, if you go through Coldwater and some of the older parts of Hidden Creek when people have redone their driveways, they paved straight down to the road. And so the trail is coming along and does kind of a little whoop-de-doo through the driveway. So the concrete to actually, in my mind, does kind of establish that sidewalk as a separate thing versus the blacktop where it's a little bit more wishy-washy as that happens during that transition. And, and that is going to be something we'll just have to deal with, whether it's blacktop or concrete is to kind of maneuver that, what do we do through those driveways again? Are we reestablishing that cross through, through the driveway? Are we, if the driveway is in good shape, are we stopping on either side? There's a little public involvement and education that's going to have to take place to kind of figure that piece of it out.
What other, I'm trying to think of like what other city, because like Mike, you know, my thought is like right now, there's some driveways that are a little worn, you know? So what happens if someone who's walking and trips on the driveway, whose responsibility is that?
Right. In my, in my mind, we're trying to establish.
Right.
A path through there that we're, we're maintaining and.
Not maintain.
Not snow, but you know, maintaining some integrity to the structure. So when we've seal coated and cracked, you have to.
Right. It's not like you just make one strip like through the driveway.
Yeah, one strip or even just any crack patching, you know, I've seen a few driveways that have peeved where the sidewalk, because I know exactly what it's like. Yeah. You bring up a good point though.
And, and again, where the, the concrete, that separation between, or trying to distinguish that through pedestrian path through the driveways is a little cleaner if it's all concrete versus the blacktop.
So you would actually cut through the driveway and put concrete? If you had an asphalt driveway, you would actually cut into the driveway and put in the cement, so the cement would run and then they would be asphalt and we would make, maintain that integrity? Okay.
Would the resident be given an option then at that time to potentially replace their driveway along with it?
Well, it's a good question. I mean, you know, and, and, and again, it depends on the material. If, if it was concrete and it's a blacktop driveway, that's not going to, two separate things. If it's blacktop and blacktop or concrete and concrete, then, you know, maybe there's some options there, but that's probably the most complicated thing about this as far as a construction and, and planning standpoint is, is those driveways. Because the other thing that's happened over time, again, when you, if you can picture going from the garage straight down to the road, we run into ADA issues where you, you know, if, remember the highway twenty-five where they had to come back in and they, they kind of the, you know, years ago when, when you did the best you could to make all that fit, that was acceptable, that's not acceptable anymore. So if we're going to replace these, the, the expectation was, would be that you put them back, that they would be ADA compliant and some of those driveways, you can't just, you can't match the driveway and make that happen.
Right.
Bitch.
Right. You have to put that little bench in there.
Now, so when you're coming, you're coming down, you're going to be like a little flat and then you're going to go back down to the road.
Yeah, so it looks like they did something wrong on twenty-five, but it's actually right.
Well, this is very complicated.
It is. Many more discussions to be had.
And, you know, and we talked in the public works committee too is, how much of this, what, what, how, what is your public involvement piece of this? Is, you know, we, we talk all the time, there's public involvement where you decide what you're going to do and then you tell people, this is what we're going to do so that they're informed. And then there's, we have no idea what we want to do, it's a blank slate, you tell us. And then somewhere in between where you, you've kind of sorted it out, vetted what you think makes sense, but still at a point where you're accepting feedback. If, if, if you get a strong sense one way or the other that, that the public, you know, has a preference one way or the other.
So.
Do you want to try to, to get that opinion or not?
If we start this project, it means then we have to make everything compliant in that section. So even if we went asphalt and we talk about the driveways that have issues, no matter if we do it cement or asphalt, they will be addressed.
We would have to correct those ADA deficiencies. We'd have to put a better.
Oh, yeah, where they like.
Just like they did.
With the bumps.
Yep.
Just like they did on.
I think, and, and sorry about that, that math, but I think there's six existing pet ramps, if you just look at what's adjacent to this year's project, I think there's twenty-two or twenty-five somewhere in there. You look at all Coldwater, all the Pet Creek.
And this is going way far down the rabbit hole, but another question. So if we're doing disrupting a driveway, like how long is a person not allowed to be able to drive on their driveway during a constr, I'm just curious, is it like for concrete, it's a week?
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, typically we say, say a week, you know, i- if we had something that was more urgent of that, there's ways to potentially accelerate that, but typically we just tell everybody, stay off of, for a week and, yeah. So there, it, it, the concrete does create a little bit more of a disruption during destruction for sure.
We'll definitely get a few answers. It's happened already with some of our curbing.
I mean, I like the idea of cement and because that's what we're putting in for all future developments, so I think at some point we need to address that. And the weed through the asphalt is just ridiculous. Right, because, yeah. Because I walk the trails quite a bit, so I enjoy all the, the walking, I can get seven miles in.
You're going to whip me too.
Okay. Yeah, but, okay, so this is, well, right?
I'll follow you in the toolkit.
And I'll walk. I got to get my steps in.
Maybe bike that.
I, I agree too. I think we should, we should switch over to concrete. I think it's the right thing to do.
I do too.
Yes. Set up future councils in twenty-five years when they're looking at replacing them again and why didn't we do something that I, just, it seems to make sense to me if that's the way we're going.
Like you said, we got to get some public input too. We have to figure out how this is all going to work with, through the driveways and.
Well, I think we need to have a plan and then we bring, we bring feedback in not having, I'm not saying that public, but like when we were doing Ridge Road, I remember I came to a meeting and all I cared about is I wanted to make sure that the curb was not the sloped curb and gutter, I wanted the whatever is the high.
High back curb.
Yeah, high back curb, just so that my driveway was flush to the road and I didn't have to angle to back out. That was the feedback, because I knew the project was a go, it was just how, to make sure that it, you know.
And I think in, during this process too, we have to look at our policy.
Yeah, I think.
Look at that.
Agreed.
I think fifty percent's. I think 50% is out of line, but I think if it got to the point.
50% for one side of the street.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right. And it's not really, it's not really adding value to your home by any means. And I think we could get challenged on that when, when we do roads and, and, and put in new utilities, that's adding.
And everybody's utilizing that, that path.
But I think if we get it down to, if we decide, okay, there's not, it's 100% on the city, I don't know if we have to get any input from anyone. I mean, if we're paying for it, we're just, we're just going to do it. I mean, on some of those now, if it was a, a, an assessment like we've done on the roads and we try to get them and gets their feedback in there. But, I mean, we'll have to talk about that. It sounds like we won't be doing anything soon, just from a finance standpoint of budgeting for this. I think we're going to have to start levying and save, you know, CIP some of this.
When we did the streets, we, we tried to, we had the mandatory hearing that we had to do with the streets. But we, at least for sure with the Fourth Street Ridge Road project, we did have a more formal, informal open house where people would come in and just ask questions and learn about the project, you know, you know. So to your point, again, you know, you, you can approach that different ways. Are, are you doing something to inform the public of what your intent is? Or are you actually asking them, what should we do? Or somewhere?
Yeah, I don't agree with the assessment of 50% because you just by default bought a house with a sidewalk. And now you have to incur that cost when everybody else is using it.
Right.
And the, the fact that you're probably not using your section of the sidewalk as much as everybody else in the town is using that section of sidewalk.
And the privilege of covering out.
Right.
And again, I'm not a realtor by any means, but I'm sure there's some people think it's, they would rather not even have the sidewalks. That it, it takes away from their house. They don't want it.
We voted it down on Fourth Street.
What, what I've seen in other communities, when it came to, if it was going to be assessed, they would rather take it out than replace it and be happy with it.
Oh, that's another option, just get rid of sidewalks altogether.
That was something I was going to bring up.
Too small on Hidden Creek.
We're talking about replacing what we have. Realistically, there are versions of this where you do a scaled back version of a sidewalk system, because there are parts of the city that do not have sidewalk. And you can go to the far other end, rather than full replacement. Well, what does ripping them all out, turning them to grass look like? Doesn't mean you do it, but. What does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, because I, my path is part sidewalk, part, you know, road. And our roads aren't super narrow, so it's not, you know, and we don't have a ton of cars parking on the street. And if you do, it's not like we have like, I mean, major roads where I'm dodging cars while I'm on the street walking.
Yeah, I, I thought the same thing when I was.
I never thought of that idea.
Dust all gone was my only, you know, concerns.
Stop walking in the bad asphalt block, I'm a good asphalt.
No, that's not a half-bad idea.
So if we do go through with concrete in the future, then is this something that needs to be addressed to from a, a builder standpoint for future builders that come in here that I know have like the sidewalk, sometimes that's for them to do on the property when they initiate.
Yeah, so right now, the standard is that they build five-foot concrete sidewalk on one side of the road.
Gotcha.
But just the, the amount of cost, that it is almost a million dollars, probably by the time we're done, when we really get in, although those drivers are fixing. But new developments, if they have a sidewalk system, it's okay. I don't think it looks bad. I mean, we're already so disjointed anyway that some of the sidewalk, maybe you don't even need anymore. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if I like just putting them in, just to put them in.
Yeah, I just.
Coldwater Eighth now, as long as we can connect things and have that connectivity from neighborhood to neighborhood or neighborhood up to downtown and, and have a path, I don't think we should be putting them on every single road.
Yeah, so like if it doesn't really go, if it's not needed, because you can take this path and still get somewhere.
Yeah, so like that loop on the Eighth Edition, that, that ties you back into the trail that's on Old Schoolhouse Road and the one that's on Coldwater Crossing. You know, similar to, you know, the Seventh Edition that does tie you back or gets you access to the Coldwater Crossing trail.
I mean, my path does take most sidewalk, because it's like on the outskirts of the development. But like Birch doesn't have a sidewalk and a lot of times people cut down that road and that's a pretty busy road. So like if I, I think that and, I don't know what the other word is. Because then I'll cut through the park, I'll cut through Metal Park, because the sidewalk, cut through Metal Park because that one section, I forget what road that is. Doesn't have a sidewalk.
Point, I mean, you know, that would be, if you truly opened it up for input, would you get any input that you're missing some links? That would be beneficial. And again, I, I don't.
Because it looks like if you.
Riverbend Trail is one, you know, Birch, you know, you mentioned that. If you look at Metal, it, it, it's kind of broken up where it gets you to the park. But then, you know, there's a, the middle section doesn't have any.
Yeah, because like when I walk, I'll just go, because it's, it's weird. Because when I walk, like I'll come and I'll just go here.
Right.
And then I take this sidewalk.
Want me to blow it up?
And then I go the new part.
Yep.
And then I come and then I cross here, but I'll take the trail and then come here and go on this place. Then I am on a sidewalk. So I do like walking on a sidewalk. But I usually never go on this road because there isn't a sidewalk. And Birch.
Birch, yeah.
So it is kind of weird that we don't really have, there isn't really a system.
And, and what I don't remember and what we don't have here, and I don't know if you ever looked at it, Nick, whether or not the comp plan what the comp plan says about any future trails or sidewalks, I, I don't know if it, if it addresses any of that or not.
Yeah, I'm just playing devil's advocate at this point. You like the sidewalks, but do you a million dollars like them?
No.
No. And I'm not advocating that's the direction we go. I went on camera, I want, just in case I get all the walkers and runners of mayor coming into the office.
Yeah, but if we require a sidewalk in the new Eighth Edition of Coldwater.
Like, I want to spur conversation that may lead to the optimal answer.
I know a lot of people walk through the ridge.
No.
Whether we aggressively did more maintenance, seal coated and replaced bigger patches of blacktop, maybe invested 100 grand. Is that something, see all, I mean, see how far that gets us and we maintain it forever.
True. Very true. Or even replace a few sections at, you know, for now.
We're just maintaining.
Right.
And I don't know how much they.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something we want to be conscious of, but it doesn't.
Well, we could also just do the corners. We could do the pet ramps and still keep the asphalt. You know, we could break up the cost, we wouldn't have to do it all now. Just get the pet ramps in, make that ADA, you know? Because that was almost 100 grand too.
We do it in. I mean, this. In looking at this, one of the scenarios that I posed to the Public Works is maybe you break it up and CIP 100 grand each year.
Kind of what we did for the street project.
Yeah, it's going to take you eight to 10 years to replace the whole thing. But you, you go out, you review, what are the worst spots? You're doing a thou, roughly about 1,000 feet, linear feet a year. Figure out what the worst spots are, prioritize where you need to replace and.
I mean, where the sidewalks are now are not bad. They kind of bring you on the outskirts of all the developments and you can make a nice loop. There's a couple just joined it, like Fieldstone, you have to walk on a little bit scarier roads to get up into the Fieldstone neighborhood. Yeah. Well, when cars are going. Yeah, they're fast and there's not a lot of room if there's two cars and, and there's not a real big shoulder.
Yeah, that, and that was one of the links, you know, that we've talked about in the past. Now, we have the, between Fifth Street and the roundabout is filled in now. And I did that with their project, so we, we have that link. But, you know, and then we've talked about and looked, you know, from time to time, getting from the roundabout up to Fieldstone Parkway along, you know, that same side of Highway 25.
I like the sidewalk that, that we did with 25 that brought you to the roundabout. That's nice because that brings, can make you kind of full circle there. So I mean.
Well, but you could.
Into Fieldstone.
But you could also safely go to Bob's or R and B now too with the sidewalks.
Yep.
Where before you were walking on the road.
Right, exactly. You can get to those businesses walking if you have to pick your car up.
And that's, as we peel this onion back, we're noticing just how many layers there are to this whole thing. These sections make sense. They promote safety and connectivity to areas that you wouldn't have otherwise, but perhaps other areas, you don't necessarily need the sidewalk because you can get around within the developments just fine.
Yeah, there's enough sidewalks in the developments to get you into the development or walking around. I do like the idea of maybe just doing it in phases.
I like phases too.
But I think we need to switch to concrete.
Asphalt, concrete, asphalt, concrete.
Well, it'd be like a whole like section, kind of like we're doing the roads.
Yeah, I think if we were to go down that road, what we try to do is not necessarily equal portions, but more look at logical project segments, you know, what, what would be a logic? If you were going to replace something, what would be a logical piece to replace that kind of just continues to expand it a, a piece at a time? You wouldn't necessarily stop mid-block, you know, if you look at Coldwater Crossing, which you go all the way to Red Oak Lane, you know.
A mile on the other side of that would be another 20 feet. Kind of, kind of like we do our seal coating. Jenny televising.
I don't know what the right answer is.
I don't, I want to say, not looking for answers.
No, I know, but I'm just saying like I.
Certainly stuff to think on.
Yes.
But now that I'm thinking about when I do walk, I do pick paths that have a sidewalk. Well, I mean, our neighborhoods.
Great, I know.
It is amazing. It is amazing, but.
I'm way off track now.
When I, but when I walk, I will take a path that has mostly, like I'm not going to walk, I'm going to walk through the park, Metal Park.
Yeah.
Instead of taking, unless I want a shorter walk, I usually don't walk on the road.
I won't let my kids on Birch, Birch Street.
Oh, yeah, I hardly walk Birch, yeah.
I do not let them.
Yeah, you know, it's, if you look at Coldwater and, and Hidden Creek, you know, some of those roads that you, you end up with kind of default collectors through there that, that are trying to, you know, provide access to a lot of homes. And at the same time move traffic through. And, you know, compared to if you look at Fourth and Fifth and just kind of what you're serving with those roads, they just naturally are going to have a little less traffic than say Coldwater Crossing or Birch or Hidden Creek Boulevard.
I mean, if we could, I mean, if you could connect Fieldstone, if we could connect Fieldstone at some point, then you could make a really nice, it's seven miles all around the outside of the neighborhoods and it's mostly on a trail.
But then that's probably a discussion to be brought back in with the annexation potential of 60 Second too. Because then you could run it all the way up to Ridge practically on that easement.
So, and.
So we have no answers and no.
Well, and, and so for, for my purposes tonight, and, and I'll let Nick speak for himself if there's any things, what he wants next steps to be or where we're at with this. The one thing I'd like to confirm tonight is even, even if we were to do the trails that were adjacent to this year's street project, I think it's a separate project. And there's a lot of questions. I, I think trying to put the trails in it, even if we're going to do them in blacktop, slows the street job down.
Okay.
Versus handling it as a separate project just to do the trails, whether it's concrete or blacktop, that would be my recommendation. So one of the questions will be as well, yeah, how aggressive do you want to be with this? Is the intent to try to have some project this year? Or is this year the, continue the conversation and try to tee up whatever the plan is, start in 2024? I don't know.
I would like to do sections. I don't think removing the sidewalks, not adding any additional that are there on existing streets. I like concrete because that's what all our new developments are going in as anyway. And just start budgeting like we did with the big street project, knowing that it's coming up and then doing it in sections like we're currently doing the street project.
But as far as maintaining, fixing, we'll probably still continue to do that for the blacktop until we get more replant in place, I guess. Probably wouldn't be this year, but.
And then I'll start a walking group and we can all walk my seven miles.
Did Mickey's path.
Yeah.
That would take me seven days. I'd have to pack a little rolling cooler.
With water, right? You can ride the scooter and we'll see where we have the deficiencies.
So I, like, to Dave's point, I think we have time to have more discussions on this, looking at policies. I think maybe a month ago it was, you know, let's get this, the council make a decision in case we did want to go along parallel with the 2023 project, but as Nick dug more into the finance side of things, money's just not there and.
I thought the assessment portion was just the biggest.
And so we got to take care of that and get that fixed, so it's just not going to happen this year. So I think we just continue the conversations and we'll continue to have them at Public Works and.
Yeah, I think we look at the assessment first, because I think that's most important.
I think the special assessment policy was from 2005. And it was very, it's very typical for smaller towns to look at a larger town's special assessment policy because it's a very complex policy. Take it, tweak it a little bit and say, there you go.
I just don't think it's fair because we don't have sidewalks on every road.
And I do think, you know, as we've talked here, it would be helpful just for future discussions. We can take this and color code it so it's clear what's existing concrete now, what's bituminous. What do we consider sidewalk? What do we consider trail? To make it a little bit easier visually to see what's what.
And then I liked what we did with the streets where it kind of listed like, okay, this section 2024, this section 2025, this section, you know, kind of, because you, I, we already have an idea of what is probably needing to be replaced first. Yeah, and the cracks.
All right, anything more on that? We'll continue with that. All right.
And if anybody, you know, you sleep on this, you have a really brilliant idea, just shoot me an email. Rome wasn't built in a day and neither will these sidewalks. So want to make sure we're doing exactly what we need to do to have that optimal solution.
Sorry, I'm so passionate about it.
Fresh documentation.
All right, liquor license reductions.
Oh, I got these two backwards, how about that? My apologies. Uh, so Mayor and I were having discuss, discussions a little while ago and we were talking about during the pandemic when the state had closed down a lot of the restaurants and establishments and a lot of cities around the state were trying to do what they could to help out their local businesses, get them up and running. And I was sharing stories about when I was in Fairfax. What they did is they waived the license fees for a couple of years just because they were closed. And then in their, kind of their recovery year, we didn't want to overburden them with anything like that. Mike had shared stories about how Mayor had gone to similar lengths, he had prorated some of those fees and tried to give relief to the businesses in town.
And we got to talking and what we wanted to pitch by council is look at something that follows that same thread and more of a permanent reduction of fees to the liquor licenses. So on this table here, pulled some data from our surrounding communities on what they charge for an on sale. This is your annual licenses, so your annual on sale intoxicating liquor license, your Sunday adder, and then your off sale as well. And what's charged with all that? So what it comes down to is usually you want to charge something that's appropriate to the cost of what city staff and what the city has into it. Typically speaking. So we look at some of these fees and we talk about we charge per license on this. The process we have for renewal with city staff is very straightforward. The the state sends us a lot of the renewal paperwork. We put together a packet of information that we've put together for years that then we give to the businesses and they checklist things off, they return it to the city, we verify that everything's good. And then, as you see on city council meetings, we throw under the consent agenda, subject to having all of that in order. So as far as time and materials we have in this process, it's a lot less burdensome than it used to be in many years ago when there was just a lot more to do. So looking at that and looking to the future of unburdening our businesses from some of the regulations and fees that we have, looking to have discussions on mainly the off sale portion, but even the Sunday. I think I think off sale is about where it ought to be. And what we would like those fees to look like to be commensurate with the type of effort we're putting in for renewals.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was ever meant to be a revenue generator.
There's quite a range.
I was just gonna say.
Interesting.
Wide range.
Up by city.
Cities have quite a lot of like establishments.
Watertown is probably. As one of the highest.
Has a lot of chains, you know, Buffalo Wild Wings and things like. Hardship as Agave or.
Yeah, ours are really straightforward.
We were just throwing it out there, seeing what we could do to help our business. I mean, it's important to keep them in town. And said, I don't think we're trying to make revenue. I don't think it was a revenue generator.
So what would what your recommendation be?
1,500 more in line?
No, it's even going significantly lower. What I have written down there, yeah, for the liquor license of all kinds. So this includes your not just the three that are listed there, but everything else, the temps and whatever, everything else we do. We budget about $6,500 per year in liquor license revenue. That's not saying it won't all go away because we're just looking at the potential of reducing those fees. But for 6,500, that represents 0.63% of our general fund revenues for an entire year. So adjusting those down, it doesn't impact our budget all that much. And you'd still be looking at pulling in 1,000, 2,000, depending on where you want to grow this. On my end, I think your off sale is fine where it is as 100 bucks, Sunday. I'd say you could even reduce that to 100 because a Sunday is usually an adder to your on sale. So when you do the renewal paperwork, the renewal paperwork has your on sale and your Sunday on that same sheet. You elect to do both rather than one or another. There's there's not separate paperwork other than say an initial application, but all three of our establishments, they have their on sale, Sunday and off sale. So Hells, Knuckleheads and Agave have all these things.
And then fill me up.
They have, they have an off sale. They just have an off sale. Correct. And then Casey's had off sale. So I was thinking, Sunday, you bring it down to 100, it would be in line with off sale and even on sale. 300, 500?
Oh, wow, that's a significant drop.
And so would this be for 2024?
Going forward.
Because we just did our fee schedule.
Yes.
I feel like this is a little bit backwards.
This. It came up afterwards.
We can, we can change our fee schedule and refund money too.
So, yeah, this is something you could implement. You just, all you do is just re-adopt the ordinance with the change.
When do we collect the fees?
They have been collected.
In January.
In January. Okay, so we collect them in January.
Collect in January. So if it were implemented in 23 this year, we would just cut them a check back for the difference.
For on sale, what did we, what did we decide we have into it? I mean, what's our cost? We have background checks. We have some paperwork, a couple hours worth of work, right?
All that, yeah. There's not a ton of work with it.
I'd be comfortable like even dropping on sales like 1,000, Sunday to 100, off sale to 100. And then reassessing, but.
I think that's a good start.
I was gonna say, cut it in half to nine.
I don't mind getting down to without a 500 eventually. My thought on Sunday and off sale, just to align with our fee schedule, if that figure if it takes an hour for each of those, on our fee schedule, we're charging an hour for our $75 and off for an hour. I would just make Sunday and off sale 75.
Oh, each 75.
Because then it aligns with our fee schedule. If it's an hour's worth of work, we charge 75 bucks according to our fee schedule. So to me, that makes sense, but 100 is fine too. I mean.
And then as we talked, I I considered, you know, on sale, I was more around the 500-ish, not going below that. But I'd be fine with 1,000 for at first and see how it goes. And obviously, the three.
I mean, I mean, that's.
They're gonna all like it. No one's gonna get us pushback, so.
Right. And that's like 60% to start. Because I mean, otherwise, what does that say? Like, well, why were you charging us all this other money for years and years? And now all of a sudden you're give a change of heart? Like, I don't know. I think we're looking at it and I think. I think.
I think it's.
The numbers.
It's one of those things that, you know, COVID.
Brought to light.
Brought to light. And what a lot of cities do is you can see there, they evaluate what other cities do and they adjust based upon what other cities do. That's a lot of what on sale is like, okay, we're looking at updating that fee. Well, what should we charge? What are other cities charging? So you go look at what other cities charge and go, oh, we're we're below by 500 bucks. Well, we should up it to make some more money. But in the grand scheme of the general fund budget, it's not really a revenue generator.
Yeah, I like helping our local business owners.
I want mine 1,075, 75 personally. And I could even be talked into going lower than 1,000.
I was gonna say, if we're gonna go 75 and 75, then I feel like we should really think about the hours we spend on the off sale paperwork and truly align it with an hourly rate. If that's going to be our justification for 75.
And the background check. And one other, anything, is there any other things we would have to do that might come up wrapped around that?
I think if we get a new business.
New establishments coming in. All of ours here in town are all renewed ones.
Right.
So the the amount of work is a lot less.
But if you say at 1,000, then you still cover if we get a new establishment, then it would cover that. That 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 we can't just, we don't know it now. It still gives them a 40, pretty much a 50% discount because you're dropping Sunday and off sale. And we can revisit again, but I I mean, 1,000 seems like a real even number.
I'd be fine with that. 1,075, 75.
And I'd like to then, if we did approve this this year, that give refund checks.
Yep.
Any thoughts? Any other thoughts?
No, I like it.
I'm just I just weirded out by the difference. This goes against everything we do, like comparing to other cities.
Right. And that's where I'm like, do we have like, so how did you come up with 1,000?
Some cities, we can utilize their police departments to run their background check or VCA. We utilize the Department of Sheriff's Department, so their fees $100.
Communities, when they, when they went from a muni to allowing licenses, it was a revenue replacement issue. I know some cities, they'll actually do their on sales according to the square footage. So I know one of these cities on this list is like that and this was the minimum they charged.
Well, I mean, in this way, like if we have other establishments that want to come in, they're like, huh, maybe Mayor is a good town because they have real low liquor license fees just to get started. Because I think there's a lot of fees that a starting business has to have to get started. And that's why some don't make it is because they didn't realize all the fees that go into just opening a business. Here we are being the ED.
Those Chan ones and get them out here.
Yeah, why don't you come out here? We only charge 1,000.
Applebee's and Beedubs.
But that will adjourn.
What's the horrible news, John?